Well, pretty present we have a form to stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks a lot. Got the copies of the agenda and another item. As you'll see, technically this is considered a special meeting only because of the timing. Calendar wasn't in the town clerk's office, so it had to be designated as a special meeting. To that end, there's no public comment portion on the agenda, but I'm going to welcome public comment on whatever items on the agenda, so people can give some feedback. And there may be, I may limit it to some extent only because one of the items that may create a lot of comments, the recommendation is going to go to the town meeting, and that's the purpose, to talk about it further anyway. So, but I wanted to make sure you understood that I'm going to allow people to be able to speak. Okay? Item number one, need to approve the minutes of December 2nd, December 8th, December 10th, and January 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes by the second.
Any discussion? Haven't heard none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, discussion and possible action regarding frisbee golf at the property. I was contacted by former Selectman Neil Ross. I guess this had, I'm not sure if it was in a Selectment meeting before, it was raised prior in the last year or two. A private resident had contacted Neil a couple of years ago regarding frisbee golf. If you're unaware, I'll have Neil actually, Neil, you're going to speak a little bit about it? We're talking about the property in some location within town to create a course, as it's called, for that sport. I played it myself, played in college. Again, it's another opportunity for activities for any, really any age, I would think, here from 12 to whatever. And again, it's to at least discuss what it's about, what their ideas are regarding the location, the impact it would have, either financial or other, if any, to the town. So, I will, Neil?
Yeah, thanks, John. Tony did go take a walk with Carl, sitting to my left, Mal, Torres, and myself, just to show them what we're thinking. Just a quick history, when I was going door-to-door as a campaign of four years ago, I did hear people say, can you hip me a frisbee golf course? I didn't know much about it. As I looked into it, I had found out around the middle school, Carl had designed a course and was moving ahead towards that. Patty Christen wanted to use it with her middle school kids. Carl had donated baskets, so they were learning the sport. The new town shooting happened, and pretty quickly, we said we can't have people walking around coming out of the woods. So Karen gave me a list of places that had 80 acres of town lands. Carl and I went to many places from the dams and found Dennis Pond looking about. The closest to downtown was my goal, that kids that are hanging out on the bridge should walk up, have something to do that costs them nothing, and was a positive thing for bringing people to town, hopefully use the restaurants and all the other things we have to offer. It's a thing that costs very little. Our original goal was it in the library, if it was at the middle school, kids could use a library card to get a disc and play for free. You do have to have a disc, at least one. Carl, his, having designed already, grew up here, had been living in New Jersey, had money and time at the time that he wanted to donate to get this thing moving. Town's had a course for 12 years now, Tom Ainsworth is a friend over there. It's, when I rehabbed my hip, that was what I did, I went and played frisbee golf with my boys, people of all ages can play it. And when I got here as a Selectman, I said, this is going to be easy, it's going to be one of the first things I do, and we just kept running into things that didn't work out, which I later found out, you know, we had some permits to hunt up there and a few other things, we just did not want to have it go easy for me to get going. We've been through a lot of things to approve this already. I brought two sets of minutes. One is June, or August 27th of 2013, is the Board of Selectmen. We brought it up there, I highlighted a few things to you guys. Deidreann, me and Rich approved it to move forward to the planning and zoning, and I did bring the minutes from the other way around, 6:13 and 8:27. The second one is the planning and zoning. They thought it was a good idea, and unanimously approved that. So Carl has moved back for a little while, he has money and some time and wants to do this his way, which is a great way, to make it a little easier course. What I was looking for tonight is if there's any questions for Carl, he's here. If you three agree that this looks like something, can Tony and I then get back together, mostly because I think Tuesday's game getting snowed out, I thought I was going to have a few minutes with him. So I haven't talked to him to follow up on if he's learned anything new, but I was looking to see if it was favorable with you guys, if Carl still has the money that can start this, and then we're going to try to get the money back with sponsorships, and hopefully the planning and zoning has already approved this. Is there anything holding us back, and is there any discussion or questions from there who's why we're here tonight?
Where would it be located at Dennis Pond?
This is the map. Come up?
Yeah, real quick.
Inside, if Dennis Pond parking lot is, here is where we pull in?
Right.
Water, Ice House Road. Park here, there's a little bit of a dam here, it goes to the left, Modus is up here, very steep hill, and the
Power line.
Power lines are up here. So about of the 40 acres that is called
George's old property was about 46 acres, from what I recall, and using the, say, the northwest 12 to 14 acres of his property that is now the town's property.
Basically, it's in, and I walked it, not the whole thing, but it's, it doesn't create an issue with the use of the pond or whatever. It's basically in the woods, is really what it is. It's off the, a couple of holes, the closest they would get to the pond, Carl, 25 feet away roughly?
The baskets might be, the tees, so people will not throw into the ponds
Right.
But still get the aesthetic aspects of it. The tees may be hunkered up close to the pond, but then you kind of shoot kitty corner away from the water. And the baskets, yeah, the nearest one would probably be in that 30 to 40 feet away from the pond. It's a shallow pond, but still, it's, you don't want it that penal where people are, you know, haphazardly throwing it, it's got to be a really bad shot to find water.
No, I mean, this isn't a good spot. I was just concerned about people fishing and getting frisbees going past their
That was my first question.
But where it's located is, I don't think that should be anymore at all.
Yeah, basically, it's in, it's up, Carl and Neil, and they're looking at the design, it's kind of off a, some parts are a little steep. So, you know, I asked, first of all, would people use it? Because it's, it's a little bit steep, but they wouldn't use it for any other purpose. Because my concern was the pond and the use of the pond and fishing. I fished there myself, there's a swing, and it doesn't impact that. In fact, it's kind of cut out of the woods, or it only, it utilizes the woods, so it's not, the other question would be, is it clearing, complete clearing? And that's not the case at all, as he showed me the design and how it gets put together, utilizes the natural setting, and then it encompasses this frisbee golf sport, and it's within the natural setup of the woods that are adjacent to the pond. So what intrigued me, certainly being a responsible leader, I said, what's the cost? And this is where Carl has offered, basically, to put the costs up for the majority of what this course would entail. And volunteers as well. As Neil said, the financial impact to the town is almost nil. And, because I asked about upkeep, how would that work? And, you know, do I have to have the town workers up there to clear things? And they're, for the most part, going to completely get it handled with volunteers. So I said, geez, it certainly is worth investigating, and again, this is two years, more than two years ago, that they already had discussed it. And there was a question concerning Conservation Commission, hey, how about those issues regarding the pond and the connection? So when I took my walking tour, my one concern was one spot that I thought was a little too close, and they agreed to back it up away from the edge of the woods, I mean, the edge of the pond. And that was really the only impact, as I asked the other questions about how would they use and who could use it. Again, it's another physical activity for different ages, it's another, it's a use of woodlands that are just sitting, it's another, and I think it would have a draw to Dennis Pond, which any folks have lived here a long time, it used to have quite a draw, people used this one there and fishing, and some still do. I think it's underutilized. I think this could draw them to that. This would be another thing that people would be interested to find out, hey, what's that all about? So it certainly is worth investigating, and that's why I was behind the idea of the plan and what was put together. You're currently putting one in in Monroe, Madison?
Well, East Haddon, town of East Haddon, asked me to come down there and design a pretty big course. I mean, there's like, one hole's going to be over 850 feet long, so it's a pro-caliber course that they're looking for. That never was my intention here, and when Neil found the property at Dennis's Pond, it certainly wasn't. And the benefit of having it really at Dennis's Pond is multiple fold, if I can coin that term. People can actually walk from town and get there. It's truly what I call an eight to 80 course, and I've seen eight, 10-year-old kids, hopefully parents are somewhat close supervising them, but they're just having a giggle of a time walking around, not even keeping score, throwing a piece of plastic in the woods, and it's great fun. Or you could take it very seriously. The holes are going to be short, I think the longest hole I have is something that's like 250 feet long, and a good thrower can throw a frisbee way further than that. So it's something that's truly for the masses, but because it's close to town and we don't want it, you know, to be a mountain goat walk for anyone, it's something that you can do recreationally and play all 18 holes in an hour and a half, because time's precious and we don't always have three or four hours that normal ball golf would have. It's almost like, you know, a win-win-win situation when it comes to the location. The cost aspects, again, it was always my intent, and I initially proposed this way back in the Michael Kroll era, if you can remember that far back in five and a half years, and for whatever reasons, just keep hitting roadblocks. You know, good cases or not, but, you know, this is the closest we're getting, and, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be able to see it come a fruition, because, you know, we want to grow the town, we want to make things good for our constituents. This is just one more small little piece that we can add to the puzzle. The cost aspects, again, it's, the town has to give up land. I was willing to donate the entire cost, which is cement, tee pads, and the baskets, and the sign, and the kiosk. And then Neil said, well, why don't we get the town more involved? Because there's a certain, you know, sense of ownership and pride when you are responsible or you sponsored or championed part of it. And I said, hey, that's cool too. I mean, it's for the town, it's not me. And so, you know, if we need to, you know, have the money, you know, footed up front, well, I can easily cover that, and then retrospectively, when the sponsorships come in, then we let the individual businesses or people, whomever, for a certain amount of money, or a certain amount of, say, expertise. Like, Modus might be one, because if they're donating the concrete, I'm not expecting them to pay for anything, they're putting up concrete, which would cost. So it's either by, you know, money, or by certain types of expertise in helping, you know, build this. And maintenance, players maintain it themselves, you know. Neil might go through with snippers and snip the old brush that, or the new brush that grows up in the spring. All you have to do is go to a course like Talland, and you see how the core group of players, they do everything, you know, the town, they go out and they put peystone out there, actually, I'm not even looking for peystone on this property. It's virtually maintenance-free.
Neil, just out of curiosity, what happened? I see approvals on here, what stalled it?
Yeah, a couple things. We went to the Conservation Committee and, you know, one person listened to Carl's talk and looked good, but when we walked out of there, they kind of thought they wanted to walk there, and they didn't want to discarding anybody, so that's what we've modified. And kind of when I was getting out of my administration, I said, of all the things I got through here, the amphitheater and all these things that just cost money and we got going, I kind of found out that because we gave permits to hunt there, that was an issue that somebody felt strongly about, I believe, it was one of the things that they didn't want us walking through the woods. But that's, I would have to say is hearsay. There was a couple things. When you get a no from anybody, like Pat Collins, if we don't want you to come through the woods, I just didn't feel like fighting that at all, and, you know, these other things were, we were looking for other properties, but we just keep coming back to this one, that, my original goal, before I met Carl, was I thought we could do it in Hyde Park, kids could get, you know, pizza and go over there with their parents, grandparents.
Should people really be hunting that close to water and fishing?
That's, again, that's not my issue or why.
There's been a few permits on that chunk of property, I don't know how many this year, maybe three tops. I also raised the same question. We have 140 acres behind Family Services, of which I've signed 30 permits or something this year, so I would direct people that way. I don't want any impudence. I also talked to our insurance agent, he was in the front of the matter, I raised the frisbee golf issue, and some, any kind of liability issue, it's a not issue, handled similarly as any other spring event within town, so, I don't, there's not a concern there as well. So pretty much have gone through all the potentials, and I tell you what, it's a pretty good idea, that's really not going to cost us anything. Sir?
Yes, my name's Tom Carter, I live on 54 Wellington, I was right on the corner between Ice House and there.
Yeah.
And I've lived there since 2002, and I've seen, in the summer, the kids lie down that little road, check their friends out, do donuts in the parking lot, and fly back up.
Yeah.
I've called the police, they've almost hit women and children walking on that street. The increase in traffic is going to be an issue, because that road is small, and the cars fly back.
Some speed bumps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've actually chased one car down because you almost hit a lady and two kids walking on the grass.
Good point.
They had to jump into my bushes, actually, not get hit.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I certainly, if all of a sudden we have an increased traffic, and again, I know there is during the summer, and it used to be utilized a whole lot more thirty years ago when I was a kid, but yeah, we would care for that, it's a good idea.
And behind there, there's a whole thriving colony of beaver that live up in that backwoods, right on the water, right on there, I don't know, I can't, I haven't got a chance to look at the map and see how that would affect it, but
They're not anywhere near the pond.
Yeah, they're at trees down into the pond all the time.
No, no, I mean, the, what are they going to do, the frisbee golf?
Oh, but the beavers go up high.
Yeah, the beavers go all the way up the side of that hill.
Well, I'd certainly would check state files, if we've got an issue, yeah, absolutely. We would care for that.
And there's limited parking down there.
This certainly is, you know, there's a, there's a parking area, not paved, we have no plans, maybe at this point, or anything, but start small. You would want to get involved, miss?
I'm Lisa Carter, and I think, I love frisbee golf, it's a lot of fun, and it's a great sport.
Yeah.
It's a good idea, it's just I'm really concerned about the speed bump.
Sure, absolutely.
And they have a temporary one on chains
Yes.
That someone had put down, you know, it's just, and as for the beavers, I hope they all go away.
Well, we certainly care for that, but it's really one of the only other concerns. And we'll do that. At this point, we're looking for a motion to accept the proposed plan, save the information regarding any kind of beaver issue, we'll care for your speed bump issue as well, and I'll make sure that, if all of a sudden we start to see the influx, which I hope we do, see the involvement, we'll care for the issue, because I live on Wellington.
Hey, I have a porta potty up there.
We'll care for that as well. But all of a sudden, that's where it came to, the fact is, we've got a parts, parts employees presence as well, we've got to do something as well, you know, to incorporate, to be able to utilize better and more, it's another facility for the town that's kind of forgotten, but I think we need to do some things.
Well, I'd just like to thank Mr. Mal Torres for, you know, if you plan, first of all, the design and your time, and the financial aspect of it, and of course Neil, I mean, it's great, anything that can get kids motivated to get outside, I think is wonderful. Thank you, and I'll make a motion to accept the proposal at this point.
Yeah, now, what can, I mean, if we push it forward, what does that, does it mean we have to ask, does it have to go to a town meeting of any sort, or anything like that, or is this just?
I think it
Staying town property, it's
I don't think it actually technically does.
Low on a certain use.
So we're not spending any real money?
No, we'll revisit it if all of a sudden
I mean, I'm all for it, so I just don't know what we can approve here and what we can't.
Not disturbing the woods, right, staying the natural, you know, taking down trees or?
There won't be 18 to 20 trees taken down
Yep.
The biggest of which I think is about eight or nine-inch hardwood.
I mean, I think that might be one of the concerns for people, but
We'll make sure with the, again, careful
There's a lot of dead trees up there though, too.
Yeah, right, right, but we want to make sure, you know, folks that weren't able to attend tonight, we want to make sure, so if nothing else, we'll make a motion to accept the plans for the design and the details, so you have it clear, and we have other issues that may come up, or you visit to make sure, but right now, at least, approve the idea of the project going forward, and then we'll go from here.
So John's motion is on the table, is that true?
I have a motion and a second.
I have a second, okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Next, appointments. We have numerous appointments, let me see, I can read those. The Heald Trust Fund reappointment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go one by one here, or are we going to read them all and then? Because I just, I'm not sure what this is, what is the Heald Trust Fund? I know it's something, provides money for the, it's like the high school library?
Yes, basically, it was established, this is the whole
Yeah, it's been established for
A little bit of history, if you guys want to look for.
Right, it was established, basically, to provide, I'm going to read more. The Heald Fund for everybody else's application, that's Administrator Trust Fund for the Stafford High School Library, as authorized at a town meeting in 1967. This trust fund has been made available to the town in the will of William Howard Heald, which specifies that these monies shall be used for the library at the Stafford High School. And that's what the Heald Fund does. What happens is, the way the statute reads is, after every election, you got to get the members approved. And that's the three individuals, Anne Maynard, Tracy Rumel, and one of the select What do you want to, uh?
Pretty many of you.
Oh, here, there's no real, there's no meetings per se, there's no
Something, I'll volunteer unless John has a
To be done a lot.
Major
These are two-year terms to expire following the November 2017 meeting.
I'll take in the Frank Fagan's name, and I'd hang onto it.
Stafford Housing Authority, Karen Mashad, this is to re-up her term, a five-year term, expired 2021. Economic Development Commission, Steve Squire, to fill the unexpired term of Sal Titus, term to expire July 1st, 2020. Service District Commission, Lita Miller, Stephen Angus De Nookie, and Scott Finch, two-year terms to expire 12, 2018. And Community and Civic Affairs Commission, Jody Harmon, to fill the unexpired term to expire April 1st, 2016.
Is this a short term?
Yeah, because the person's late. The fact is, we, for everybody's information, we've got places on a bunch of commissions and boards, we need to get some people involved. We're going to be sending it out through the town email and on the website, in case you talk to your friends and relatives. That commission in particular has three more available spaces, as an example, so we need some folks to get involved. These folks have been kind enough to offer their services for these. I'll entertain a motion to accept the appointment.
I'll make a motion to accept appointments for rent by 1000. Second that motion?
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion and word for bid for 2016 Small Cities Grant Writers. We've put out for bid for anybody who could be the grant writers for small cities. We had one response, it was from the Community Opportunities Group of tenants we've used for the last 20, 25 years. And how that works is that they do all the work for us with grants, they write them up, they do all the legwork, they're paid a fee, but the fee's paid out of the grant as has happened for the last 20, 25 years. So basically, it's to keep things as they have worked over the last however many terms. I'll entertain a motion to accept their bid.
Go ahead, sorry, John.
No, sorry, I just have a question first, don't I? The way that it says here that they will prepare the Small Cities Grant Application for a fee of $6,000, and then application preparation fees in the amount of $3,000 are recovered from the grant.
Yeah.
In my, to me, it sounds like we're only getting a $3,000 recovered, but it's that whole thing that's being recovered from the grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. That's usually my first question. Did I, did I have a motion?
I started one, but yeah, I interrupted it. Sorry. I'll make a motion to accept the Small Cities.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? Have we done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, the discussion of possible action regarding ordinance to remove members or alternates for voting commission. These are non-elected, I suppose we should have put that in there. This came up in discussion in the previous Selectment meeting on the 6th. I tabled it at that time, there were a couple of things, comments from the public and John had questions, it was John Locke and myself, Warren Tenent, and there were a couple of questions regarding a couple of the items and the description of the ordinance and how it carried for. Basically, that stemmed from discussions about currently, for most, the Board of Selectmen appoint members of these board of commissioners. And there was, and for the most part, the Boards of Commissions and their, and And there was, and for the most part, this, the boards and commissions and their, and the ordinance, I mean, statutes that, um, govern them are scattered in their description, also in the terms. But what it didn't do, while it allowed us to appoint people, it didn't, there was no vehicle to be able to have people who no longer attended, uh, moved away, you couldn't track them down. The only way physically for it to, to change members was you had to get a letter of resignation. Uh, and, and there's been cases in the past where it's been known it's impossible to track people down. Um, so you're stuck, and I know there's commissions and boards and there's probably members here now that, that have told me, hey, we can't even get a quorum, because we don't have enough people attending, and there's people in a position and they don't, they don't attend, they don't want to be involved. I don't know why, we just can't, uh, get the letter from them, if they, figure out a position for people that do want to get involved. Uh, PCA changed their, um, changed their, uh, commission to have lesser members, because they couldn't get a quorum. I don't want to have to start looking at all the boards and commissions and start to pair them down, just because we don't have people wanting to get involved. People want to be involved, um, and it's, that's only one of the examples. As it's read, um, in any case in which the board of selectmen has appointed a member or alternate to a board, commission, or to a committee or a commission in accordance with any of the ordinance of the town Stafford, and notwithstanding the fact that said members or alternates have been appointed for a term of years, the board of selectmen may remove said member or alternate from cause. Cause is defined as follows, the member or alternate is no longer eligible to serve on the board of commission. The member or alternate has been convicted of a felony. The member or alternate has engaged in any corrupt or fraudulent activity with respect to his conduct as a member or alternate of the board or commission. The member or alternate has not attended any meetings of the board or commission for a period of at least four consecutive meetings. Each member or alternate of a board, commission, or committee shall faithfully perform the duties of his appointed office and shall make a significant contribution to the work of his board, commission, or committee. No member shall permit his personal interest or prejudices to affect his actions or decisions in the service of the town. Failure not to perform may result in removal. What's important is number three, where it says, each incident will be on a case-by-case basis. In any case in which the board of selectmen intend, consider, or act on the removal of a member or alternate, the member or alternate shall be given at least two weeks' written notice of the time and place of the meeting, at which said removal shall be discussed or acted upon. The board of selectmen will also hear input from other members of said board, committee, or commission regarding the removal of a member or alternate. Said written notices shall state the cause of removal and the particular actions of the member or alternate which constitute said cause. At any board of selectmen meeting at which the removal of a member or alternate is to be discussed or acted upon, said member or alternate shall be permitted either personally or by counsel to address the board of selectmen as to why he should not be removed. So, as I said, part of, uh, this was adjusted a bit from the last one with input from a couple of residents. Specifically, the, um, talked about, as the description came, of somebody who was convicted of a felony. But there are circumstances regarding any of these situations that would warrant, um, to handle them case by case. These aren't, uh, overreaching or broad brush to determine that we just want to remove, that these folks shouldn't be an issue. But it does give the board, while we have the ability to, um, appoint them, there was no vehicle in place for the opposite. And it's come up in numerous different, um, boards and commissions over the years. So this was the first, um, now, second blush, effort to afford some kind of vehicle as a proposal to give the board of selectmen the ability to go to determine, along with that board of commission and its members, with their input. And again, the, the idea is to bring it to a town meeting, so the whole town gets to discuss the issues. And I thought certainly it warranted at least the ability for the rest of the town to discuss, and to throw out where they, and that's why, uh, we created this.
Yeah, uh, option D, um, the member has not attended any meetings for a period of at least four consecutive meetings now. I mean, I can see a, you know, a caveat there where they missed three meetings, attend one, then miss three more.
Yep.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, that doesn't give you the avenue if somebody shows up, misses three, shows up once and resets the clock, you know?
True. We talked about...
Maybe it needs to be a little broader, like there's a percentage of meetings or, I don't know.
Yep.
That's why E is in place, though, because then...
Yeah, E is in place by case, but, but can you, can you even take action, you know, the board members missed three meetings, attended one, misses three, attends one?
Right.
You know, this doesn't, that's not cause, according to this, you know what I mean? It is case by case, I, I guess you could bring it up, but, you know, if it comes back to cause, they can say, wow, I didn't miss four straight meetings, so...
Or is, 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 um, is that accurate, or is this just another option to remove someone? Or do they, do you have to go by the four? Because to me, it sounds like E is saying that if, you know, if you're not faithfully performing the duties, which means, you know, if you miss three, show up one, and essentially show up to like three meetings a year, regardless of whether it is, you know? Once every, once every four months. I think you can make a case to say that that would fall under E, but, um...
We tried to, as we discussed, trying to come up with, uh, some language, and, and it may be a little more specific, because in this case of four consecutive, it was where the board of commission only had monthly meetings, so it's four straight months, basically, to do that. Other, and, and it could be an asterisk with caveat about if this is a bi-monthly, uh, meetings, especially with board of finance, they need twice, uh, twice a week during the budget season. It's only when it constitutes this, but then we cared for the idea that, hey, somebody broke their back.
Right.
They're out for an extended period, that's why we said, hey...
Case by case.
Yeah, so we handle it case by case, because that's extreme, don't you think?
Yeah.
So, yeah, if we, if we adjust that language for the qualification of the meeting calendar schedule, that could care for that, but the idea is right, for a percentage even. Uh, but then you, you figure out, okay, how do, how do you figure that out? Um, but at least it gave us some kind of a skeleton to start from somewhere.
Yeah, no, this is better than, this is better than the last one.
Right, so if we wanted to, uh, make that adjustment in the, uh, central ordinance, and again, this is to bring it to the town, so they can, um, give us their feedback, if exactly, and we work for them, to be able to allow. Yeah, I'll take, um, I'll take questions afterwards.
Okay, um, we're eight, we're all eight, you can get them. We have a lot of Florida snowboards, snowbirds.
Yes.
Children who's experienced people.
Yep.
Who are in Florida for the four winter months.
Yep.
So, do you offer teleconferencing here to these, to the board members? Is that an option? That way, they're not absent, their body's not there, but their voice is on the line.
Uh, and that came up, um, and again, it goes down to three, we're, we're talking a case by case. Uh, Beth was explaining to me that the fact is, there is a gentleman who goes to Florida, um, for five or six months.
What, Tallahassee?
You know Tallahassee, sorry, at a stretch, and, and, but that's expected, that's his schedule, and the rest of his, uh, board knows that, and, and they care for that, that's why we're able to do that. Instead of black and white only, and hey, you missed four, that's it, sorry, it's a good question. Uh, yes, sir?
Under two C, I think you have a problem with that one. Uh, if the member or alternate has engaged in any corrupt or fraudulent activity with respect to his conduct as a member, first of all, who's going to judge? And secondly, if anybody did engage in corrupt or fraudulent activity, they violated state law. And the only way you know whether they were guilty or not would be to wait until the case was adjudicated and there was a final decision made. So, uh, that, that's really, uh, gentlemen, it's a real slippery slope, I mean, um, I don't think there's anybody, unless you're a lawyer or something, uh, that could make this kind of a ruling, and the person's going to say, no, I didn't, I'm innocent, and then you have to leave.
Well, I would, I would think that's where we handle that case, and we say, hey, by the way, uh, let's get the town attorney to be able to tell us, um, in fact, you are innocent to prove you guilty, so I don't think we'd act on anybody if they were charged with, I, as an example. Um, that, I certainly don't think we'd act on that until some times that were deemed that they were guilty.
Okay, and so they're, all right.
Makes sense?
Sure.
Greg?
Yeah, I had a, I had a question.
Sir?
Have you guys, now, um, this is something that came up on the, I run the discussion page online.
Okay.
And, uh, something that I come up was the idea of maybe like an ethics commission, have you guys thought about that by any chance? I was, I was thinking about that in regards to what the gentleman, gentleman up front was saying, especially in regards to something, you know, when it comes to something like, if they're involved in like criminal activity and whatnot. Have you guys thought about that at all, or is it something that you just really plan on taking care of through the board of selectmen?
Well, I, two things, one, I think, uh, first of all, I know it's been discussed in the past, um, but the idea of an ethics commission separate from this is, well, uh, I think it's something to investigate. Uh, I was in Bristol today and saw that they had an ordinance commission, similarly, to handle some things, um, that help us because we're, we don't have a charter. So we're working as best we can under the understanding of, of state statutes, and we're making adjustments as we have to, because we don't have a charter. So I think that's, uh, certainly worth investigating, the ethics commission. Um, this gives us kind of a fairly simple ability to just get the people on the commission or board, so they, they can perform their functions. I know Community and Civic Arts Group hasn't met in three months, because they don't have a conservation commission, they haven't had enough people. Uh, but there's names attached, they're, they're on the boards, but they, but we're not getting it moving.
Sure.
So, that's what we're trying to determine, is if we can get those folks, uh, even just to let us know that they're going to be involved. I've been trying to track down somebody in particular, and they're just not getting back, I don't know why, so I'm just curious what the whole of this...
Sure.
Uh, Karen had a question first.
Um, on number two, please.
Yep.
The member or alternate has been convicted of a felony. Typically, our boards, with maybe the exception of one, um, require you to be an elector of the town in which you serve. And if they have, uh, they're convicted of a felony, then they're exempted, so it's sort of kind of reconsolidated what the rule already is. Just a thought.
All right, my understanding, um, uh, some, discussing is that if you didn't get your voting rights back after ten years timeframe, so, they couldn't care for that, we understood that. Um, but yes, and, and the fact is, I, in my mind, thought it was within their term, all of a sudden they were convicted. Not prior to, obviously, we eliminate them as a candidate, I think that was easy. It's within the term, all of a sudden, something happens, and then we're like, oh, now we got a problem. You want me? Tom? Yeah.
A few questions.
Sir?
Okay, uh, how a member of these, are, yes, I'm a party member.
Yep.
Do we have a party members and we have elected members?
Yes.
Okay, you have ordinance to remove member or alternate members. So you're telling me you're going to remove a duly elected official?
No, 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 elected officials, no.
This is only appointed, this is only for...
Okay, because it didn't say.
Yeah, that's what I said when I started, I'm sorry, and it...
It doesn't...
Got omitted, uh, but yes, it, it's not elected officials, so we're not tackling that idea at all.
Yeah, I think it does in the one here.
Does it handle any...
In any case, which the board of selectmen has appointed a member or alternate to the board.
Yes.
So if, this is only...
Yeah.
I believe if there's a vacancy and appointed, that the chairman of that party appoints a person to that board, is it not wrong?
Uh, in some cases, absolutely true, yeah.
So, how's that going to work with, with, stop stating that you're going to determine who gets put in there?
Well, obviously, in the case where, uh, the board of selectmen don't have the ability to appoint, we would be appointed group.
And, uh, who's going to keep the track record? Where's those records kept? Are they going to be public, uh, information?
They are currently, right, they currently kept in town clerk's office.
You, you mean the records are like, um...
Okay, John Q. Public, okay, he's got four, he's got six good months, okay, good for John.
Yeah.
John, you know, be public, he hasn't been there for three months, is, is she going to be a red, green, yellow?
My ex, yeah, my expectation is that, uh, as, again, as we try to corral this board and commission issue, because it's so broad-ranging, uh, the terms and, and how it's, how they're put together and the limits and everything else, um, my expectation is that we would compile that and have it available, um, in the selectmen's office, and we make it available in her and the town clerk's office, um, because we need to keep track of what's happening. Likewise, we, I have an idea that I'm going to meet, um, probably the board of selectmen, would meet with them, if nothing else, on a quarterly basis, saying, okay, where are we with boards and commissions? Where are we with personnel? Do we have issues? How do we handle this? I think we need to be a little more proactive in handling, they just kind of have run their own. Besides, part of also the whole issue is, um, the access to this building for their meetings. There's been issues where all of a sudden the doors haven't been locked after meetings, so there has to be a little, a little bit more control on making sure that everybody's following the same process. And I'm putting together that expectations on board of commissions and chairman, uh, so we're all following at least the rules for simple things. Here's how the meetings should be going, everybody that needs it and wants it, it's, uh, education around its rules, and then there's the, uh, security aspect of, you're in charge of the building, this is your responsibility. So that's all part of the board and commission issue that, that I see, and we would collect and keep that information, so you would know this person missed three straight meetings. Um, and I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
Each, each board keeps track of their minutes?
Yeah, the minutes.
Minutes.
The minutes, so all the minutes are already collected anyway, and they're already available, so you can find out through the minutes who is in attendance and who is not.
I've seen, I've been in the summertime with less elected officials there.
Yeah.
The alt.
Oh, I believe.
Is there any way we can maybe have something said to the elected officials that don't show up?
I don't have problems with that. I don't have problems with that.
We add that to the list?
How would you like that?
You can say it, but you can't, they're elected.
Yeah, they're elected, that's...
Can't do anything they can't do.
Can I do it in a friendly way? Yeah, absolutely. Any of us, certainly. Yeah, because we have people who, you're there for a reason, and we want you to be involved, it's a good point. Sir, you had a question?
Yeah, Alex Bubai, I have seventy-seven Grand Avenue.
Yeah.
Um, in three, I'm a little concerned about the, about the wording regarding the, uh, the two weeks' notice and so forth. You made reference in the casual discussion about, uh, a town meeting, but I don't see any reference to it here. Uh, the meeting referred to here is, is in lower case and, and seems rather, uh, ad hoc almost. Um, may I suggest that, uh, if it's to be at a town meeting, that it ought to be, uh, stated here, and that, secondly, maybe to warn the, uh, the, shall we say, guilty party, I don't know if that's the proper term, but, uh, don't quote me on that anyway.
Sure.
At a, at a, at a, at a first town meeting, at a discussion maybe, and then action on a subsequent town meeting.
Of course, my, my impression is it's not a town meeting, it's a board of selectmen meeting.
Yeah, I think he was going to send it to a town meeting for more discussion.
The ordinance, the...
The ordinance itself would go to town meeting, the, the discussion, in the details of it regarding this guilty person would be a board of selectmen meeting.
Be a special meeting.
Okay.
Snap.
Right, 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 yeah, the, but the issue is, is it going to be a meeting of the board of selectmen? It just says, uh, a, uh, a notice of time and place of the meeting, at which said removal shall be discussed and acted on. It just, I think it needs to be more specific.
Sure, we can put the, the, the word board of selectmen again, that's, I thought it was on the first line, but, well, yeah, good point.
And if it could be warned, and then the subsequent meeting, take action.
Uh, yeah.
Two weeks' notice, two, two weeks' notice of the, is it two weeks' notice to the party, or two weeks' notice of the meeting agenda?
Uh, I'm reading, um, the member or alternate shall be given two weeks, at least two weeks' notice of the time and place of the meeting.
Yeah, so the rest of the public might not be aware of it, at, at that time, might find out after the fact.
We would, we would, I would suggest we would, um, put a notice, so you would know at least, just like any board of selectmen meeting, twenty-four hours notice, minimal, is what we would do. And that's how that would be addressed, again, it's a, it's a special meeting, it could be in attendance, it couldn't comment, technically, uh, but yeah, it would be noticed. Uh, Dave first, then go to him.
Uh, just to, to informational points, in the first term of Alan Bakayaki, uh, Kathy Pruden, and so, Majority and Board of Selectmen, there was a long, uh, town meeting about the idea of setting up an ethics commission. At the time, a lot of this is, you know, kind of sensitive, but there were a lot of cases in several towns around us where an ethics commission would accuse a city selectman of violating ethics statute, and, uh, that person would sue somebody, and it was a huge litigation problem. CCM was in favor of, uh, of an ethics commission at the time, and so the people in favor grew from their information. But at the time, it was a, a really hot potato, and it was a, a case where a lot of people felt that volunteers and commissions might be forced to spend money hiring, you know, people to defend, and so forth. So the, that night, the vote was, I would say, three to one against the, uh, the idea of adopting it, but it could be raised again. But it could be raised again.
Sure.
You know, the political environment changes from time to time. And there certainly pluses and minuses for it. The other, the other thing is, I, I just wanted to clarify, except for the registrars of voters, there's no member of any commission who's appointed by the town chair that doesn't go through the Board of Selectmen. They nominate someone, it sends you the names, they have to recruit, right? But it's not done by the chair themselves, except in the case of the registrars of voters. I think that's how it works.
Yeah.
Let me just send the list forward.
Kevin, it still has to be, these gentlemen or whoever here still has to vote on it.
Like a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
That's all it is, is a recommendation.
Yes. Gordon, David, anybody else? That's why, again, it's worth the effort, I think, to bring it to the full town, to get their input as well. I think conceptually, my feeling is, hey, that some of this really makes some sense about some ability to get folks engaged and to kind of hold accountable that if you want to be on it, that's why you volunteered originally. But now you don't want to, that's fine, but just let us know that you don't want to. That's kind of, it's only.
I think it's a great idea, I just think that it needs to be like the other sort of, or whatever. And I think it's a difficult thing to put together. I think that it's a great idea, but it needs to be longer, and it needs to be less arbitrary, if that makes sense. In other words, you don't ever want to use it as, as seen as a political tool. You have to have something that you have the guidelines set, and it's the amount of arbitrary involved when it comes to removing somebody. And I think then the town would be more likely to adopt.
Yeah, I think, but I thought that's where the discussion was going with the fact that this, I think, takes care of that. Because it's case by case, and it's, it's been a couple of points, but not to the degree that it needs to be changed. And again, this is only a snapshot of a small group of people, but the people obviously that are involved. Subsequently, put it onto the rest of the community, so they would be involved. And that's what the motion is basically creating with. But I understand, is that what you're saying? Specifically, is there something on here that you're talking about that would make it less arbitrary to your understanding of this proposal?
I don't think it goes into enough depth, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I think when it was, as soon as you add in case by case, that makes it very arbitrary. So I think, I just think the guidelines need to be a little more firm as far as, you know, the, these are the ones we're going to look at case by case.
Sure.
In other words, you know, like you said, four meetings, I know I talked to somebody, Ellington has something similar.
Right.
And it might be if you miss more than two out of twelve meetings.
Sure.
You know what I mean, a more, a more firm number that would bring it to the next step, where you say, okay, let's take a look at this and see if there's, there's cost.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I hope, and I appreciate what you're saying in the context. I think that's why, I would argue for, for the opposite, for the same reasons. It's not arbitrary because we said, instead of it not being case by case, instead it's, here's a broad, albeit detailed reasons why this person should be removed. And then that was kind of it, but I don't, I don't think that's fair. So I think that's the purpose of saying, hey, let's look at each individual thing. I could have the town attorney draft something that's now three more pages for more detail, at a cost of a hundred dollars. I don't know that every single circumstance could be cared for. That's why I think we leave it at least in the hands of your elected Board of Selectmen, with the input from those existing board members and commission members. And again, these are for the glaring examples of, hey, we're just, we're just trying to get somebody else in the position because we don't have a vehicle to be able to put them there because we can't find them. And that's happened, we could not physically find the person, and there's nothing for us to give us an ability to be able to remove them.
You could put that in the ordinance, you could put in there, you know, if the person doesn't respond.
Fair enough.
You know what I mean, as simple as that. Like I said, the fraud, that's easy, the misconduct, that's easy, that's all great stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about mainly having, you know, not, or missing meetings or not going to enough meetings.
Yeah.
I think that should be a more, a more defined thing. So it doesn't have to be case by case, very simply hit this point. Okay, fine, you refer it over to the Board of Selectmen to see if that is.
That was a good item.
Right, and that's, in one sec, that was what John was talking about regarding, and that's why I tried to clarify at least the idea of four, because each one, each board and commission has their own count. Some are twice a month, some are more often than that. So then try to nail down all the potentials because they're so broad in their definitions.
Straight out by the video.
I just wanted to respond to this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the whole reason this is coming up is, you know, and your concern is a political thing, and I get it. But I think that most of the time what's happening, and the reason it's been kind of brought to our attention, is the boards or commissions themselves are saying, listen, we don't have enough people here, or this person's just absolutely refused to show up. And that's kind of why this has been brought to light, it's not our intention. I mean, I'm not saying, maybe you're saying it needs to be clarified so that way it's not used as a political tool, but certainly not our intention, it's just the boards or commissions are coming to us saying, we can't do anything because we don't have enough people here, they just refuse to show up or refuse to do anything.
If that was the case, then you could very simply solve this with ordinance saying that if somebody's not attending meetings and they don't respond, they don't respond, in other words, to resign or whatever, then you have the authority to remove them. I mean, you wouldn't have to go through the whole.
No, you wouldn't, but the only thing I'd throw back to is, what's, what's the allowable amount of time to respond? They're on the, they're in Africa on a safari for four months, so there's caveat for potentials for each scenario to be an issue. That's why we say, hey, by the way, let's, let's figure out, in this person's case, we can't find them, we can't track them down. They have not responded for four months, and then, yes, but all of a sudden, they all of a sudden show up, or we get some notifications from them, hey, by the way, I was in, I was in a coma. I'm like, oh, sorry. Right, so that's why I was saying, the case by case, right, I make like, the fact is, at least we'll look at it in greater detail, and then maybe this, or and the rest of the Board of Commission members have said, hey, we know about Joe, he, here's what he's doing. He changed his job, and then, which started shift and everything else, we can't, we don't see him ourselves. So, oh, let's look at his, let's determine that. I think it'd be too hard for me and the other selectmen to come up with enough potential scenarios on all the boards and commissions and their calendars and schedules, so this is just at least a broad attempt. And that's why when John raised the initial question about four in a row, then we talked about, hey, let's, we'll make an adjustment for consistency.
I'm actually trying to simplify it by saying, hey, take out, you know, if somebody, the ordinance has to do with fraud and stuff like that, I think there's already, there's probably already things in place to remove somebody, so now?
There's not.
There isn't?
Technically, no.
You know, my, my big thing is, when you get to the, how many meetings you missed or whatever.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think there's a way to make that very simple. Like I said, you, you missed X amount of meetings, you don't respond. Because like you said, you're, one of your biggest concerns, you said, come in, was if people just don't show up. You try to get home and they don't respond. I mean, that should be a reason to say, okay, now we can remove them.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would entertain language, if you have some line that would help us.
I have nothing.
Yeah, the idea, Tom, I didn't have a producer.
Instead of a set number, like you said, each board needs different times to have a percentage. That would make it fair.
That's what Ellington does, I think it's a percentage of a certain amount.
And the, I don't know if this was brought up already, but it says, okay, corruption, et cetera. You may want to have something that says they've been convicted of something. Because if you're, if you're just saying that somebody, say, Joe Blow has brought up on charges, he hasn't had due process yet, so you're already basically punishing him.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I, I agree with that. I don't think we take, we're talking about taking action until something's been decided, right?
Any, if we, if we will put it in, in the language it basically says, until legally.
I just said.
We can certainly add to it, yeah.
It would legally warrant that, I'll go to the first one, I'll come back, yes.
Yeah, I'm Alex.
Yes.
Well, I've heard so far pretty much, right, probably ninety percent of the discussion hasn't been about, has been about absenteeism.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's a, that's a, that's a great criterion. I think it's, it's really important to be able to, to take action in those cases. But why do we need E? Why not just do away with E if, if all we're talking about basically is, is absenteeism and, and maybe some kind of felonious action? Boy, E is, seems fraught with all kinds of things. Who decides what is, what is a faithful performance? And that kind of thing, that the language there just seems wide open and.
Can I be aggressive?
A member, a member of a board or commission might be engaged in mischief of some kind. But it takes, it takes people to judge that. And I just, I haven't heard anything about any accusations or any problems with that. It's, and so I don't know why it's in there.
You said I was next, my idea, I thought it was intoxication.
It's a good point.
That's what I thought, Alex, that's what I was going to say next.
E?
That somebody put E, that you were intoxicated or not fit to serve.
It's happened.
That's what my thought was.
That's a lot of words to say.
Well, the fact is, um, the fact is, the, the idea, again, that we're talking about the person and their, and their performance of their duties regarding the sport of ritual, which they volunteered in their, they all have expectations for. They're, they're not just to get together, there's, there's things that they do for the town in, that reflects on the town. So in that case, an absolute, one of those examples, which is, which I thought about regarding this. So it made it a little bit broader, so again, there's, there's, you can look at it two ways. One, that's too broad, and I'm saying to myself, no, that gives the Board of Selectmen and that board or commission the ability to review it because it is broad. And then we're saying, oh, there's, there's a, there's a situation, as in, they get their medication changed, it seemed like they were falling asleep at all the meetings, and then something else as an example, right?
Well, E doesn't tell me that at all.
Can I just add one thing? I support what you're saying, I just add one thing.
Sure.
This is all good intention, it will have to be reworked, but I agree with the comments that were made. When you talk about personal interests or prejudices, those things are so open to definitional conflicts, particularly personal interest. Somebody gets on the school board because they're a parent, they have four kids in the school. They have a personal interest in seeing that the school performs well. Is that going to be considered to be grounds to be removed? And all prejudice means really is prejudging something. So somebody that's like, who believes taxes are generally too high in the whole country, and including Stafford, might get out of commission and vote to lower taxes because he believes it's too high. Those are words that you never could define, right, they're, it's a trap, each one of them.
The Board of Selectmen, that's, it's elected, as part of your example. I understand what you're saying, this was created by an attorney, in fact, it was Tony, upstairs, it was obvious, right, this thing. So these are some of the things that we care for.
I'd like to be on the other side of the case, I'd argue court.
Uh, yeah, I understand. Again, it, it gives us at least some ability to visit the options that this person who volunteered and was put on a board or commission, they're there, and we don't have any recourse. That's all it's doing. It really is going to the town to discuss and further agree with you.
You guys aren't looking to police every board and commission. You're looking to be able to take action if a chairman comes to you, if there's an issue.
And right now, they, and I believe, I've got frustration from a couple of different commissions, and they're thinking, what can you do? When I looked into it, there was nothing we could do, so.
So that's what this is for.
That's what it was.
Right, and I, and I agree. We're trying to, and these are all great points.
Yeah, they are.
Maybe it needs rewriting to make a little more, to be clearer, option E here.
And Alex, I think.
Be more specific, like Steve's saying, you know, just something specific and.
I think Dave hit the nail on the head with the prejudice and personal interest.
Yeah.
Well, it's difficult, I mean, I can, I can give you an example, Alex, is someone shows up and they're on the board, and all of a sudden, there's a new election, and they don't like, people have been elected, so they just decide that they're going to stay on the board or commission, and, but not perform any of the duties because they're just frustrated. And so that would be a reason for the chairman to say, listen, this guy absolutely, shows up to the meetings, but refuses to do any work, refuses to help, and we, we'd like to get rid of him. And then that's when they would come, and then that's where it's, E would fall into that category, and why would you need to do something about it? Because if you're not going to help the town, then why be in the commission? So that's, I think that's why it's in place.
What idea about prejudice? That's, I don't know.
Well, I, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have a problem eliminating line, second sentence from E. That would be, that would have a problem, because it basically cares for the first part, basically, are you, are you engaged? Are you part of the process? Are you involved in the thing? Again, it all goes to, are you, do you want to be on the thing? If you don't want to, just let us know, that's all. So I don't have power in moving line number two. The member shall permit from there until the word town. And again, they're reviewed case by case with the input from that board of missions and their fellow members. And the other one is C at the end, pending legal outcome, just so there's wording in there, because we discussed it here clearly, but I think that would care for that.
And I think it's important to, you know, Alex, that there is that, you know, item three where it is case by case, so the person that's supposed to be removed from the board or commission does have an avenue to bring their case forward and why they don't believe they should be removed, and they may be able to, you know, change the mind of the board members or.
It's explainable, there's, there's history behind it, there, here's the explanation.
We do give them an opportunity.
Well, that's the purpose, right. And again, oh, gee, we didn't know that, we didn't have those details, nobody from your board or commission knew any of that stuff. Now it's come to this, so finally, all of a sudden, the person comes up. And then, but at least it gives us the ability.
Someone said I had personal issues at home, and I wasn't able to make it, but.
And maybe they were uncomfortable to talk to their own members of their own board or commission. I don't know, but at least it gives us somehow a chance for the elected officials to look at people that did get appointed by the same board.
Should we remove this one here?
Yeah. Anybody else? So with the, with the changes, I would endgame a motion, again, it just goes to town meeting, that's the motion.
Right, so this isn't over yet, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
We're going to get probably a hundred more comments at a bigger.
Exactly how it's supposed to be.
So, correct.
Would I end up getting a motion?
I'll make a motion to bring this to, where do we need?
Town meeting?
To a town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Just, just to say that, again, the only reason this is being put in place is to hopefully help the town by keeping people in a position where they can actually help us move forward with everything that the town wants and make it a better town. No other reason for that, that's it.
Okay, all those in favor? I. Discussion possible action regarding the turbulator units for town buildings. This was brought to me, we're not in compliance, the, we've got a need for four, for four different building locations. About that, are there locations?
Police station, community center, town hall, and building services.
Yeah, even our police station doesn't have one. Schools have them, luckily, those replaced.
Libraries have got one.
Libraries getting one separately, they're going to save it their own. There, there is a, Alex, right, Alex Moore, investigated this to try to get the best possible price that they absolutely needed. You'll, you'll find if you know anything about them, all schools have to have them now, public buildings. So we need these four. He did some real good work to get the price really far down. That's about half of what we need to pause. So there are two options for us as a Board of Selectmen. One, to make a motion to bring it to the Board of Finance so they can be purchased now. Or two, we could put it in for this year's budget, can be purchased anytime after July. But in our short history of the last few years, God forbid it goes. But in our short history of the last few years, God forbid it goes to a referendum for one, two or three more times, it could get into August, September. And I don't think that makes any sense for a delay. It's not my call list. I, I, I would suggest that we, we need this, it should be done. I've talked to Lieutenant Duncan, we've been very clear, look behind it, so is Lord, family services, there's, there's a real need and concern for the safety of the residents. To me, it's a no-brainer that I want to bring before you guys.
Well, I would say that if it's, if we're not in compliance and don't move ahead with this and something happens, that opens us up for some sort of legal precautions for not being compliant and.
Potentially, and there's, and there's a couple of individuals that are carefully watching us and the fact we don't have them, so I want to care for this so we don't have a problem and maybe we're going to need one.
I hope we'll hardly support the use of this equipment, but training, will the town employees receive training so we reduce the liability.
Yes, Alex and his ambulance group will do that for us.
Okay.
He'll take care of that to get everybody involved.
That would be a major loss if somebody messed up.
Yeah, town hall, Lord, personnel as well, will all be taken. And I'll be careful. Good point. Very good. Sir?
Eighteen, uh, I'm sorry, one thousand eight hundred and eighty per unit for totals seventy-five hundred and twenty dollars. Again, family services, town hall, community center and the police station.
Are they like fire extinguishers where they lose their charge?
Uh, no, they, they, they work differently. I can go through the full detail, they're, they have a battery backup though and they would, they would care. Alex and his group already handled some things for us. They would make sure that those are updated and everything else.
Is there a maintenance package or plan that goes along with these so we don't get them, then all of a sudden it just, they just die or from lack of use?
Well, that's why I made sure when I spoke to him regarding if we do purchase these, you might, organization, be careful, please, put the town, he suggests, do it up.
When I was the safety director for Little League, it was one of the first things I took on and definitely when you read this liability for Little League, you needed one. Gordon was the first selectman. That was my first citizen of the month award. I did purchase one and bought one at my office to make it a little bit lower.
Yep.
But I think it is the one thing you have to have. You, you only admit it when something like that happens, you have to go with ambulance. But if something dropped tomorrow and you didn't have it, you know, just personally who you're going to lose plus the liability. Eighteen hundred might sound like a lot, but I think you got to go to the board of finance and get that as quick as you can.
Good point.
Certainly what we see at the Little League field and, and we're just going to add heavy pens, you know, there's kids that are getting stung for the first time. Throw that in there. After you have to do it with this thing.
Sure.